I hope my guy will ride.
I would like to.
I think I was probably a little soft.
I think I was probably a little soft. I haven't planned anything for you yet.
Are you want to sit here with us?
I want to stay at this spot.
I won't help you make a motion anymore.
At seven o'clock, call the order, the regular meeting of the city council, the city of Ranspas, Texas on the nineteenth of May, twenty fourteen. We'll all stand and give the prayer. Lord, I'd like to give thanks for this beautiful day, also for everything you've done for us throughout our families and throughout the community. Thank you for the guidance, the leadership bestowed upon us. I'd also like to give, hopefully, quick prayer for all those that aren't feeling well. Hopefully, things will turn around for them, for the best, and also for their loved ones that are worried for them. Just help us, guide us, take care of us, and thank you so much for being there for us. March over, October.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
This will bring us to item number three, consider an act on revised minutes on April twenty first of the regular minutes of May fifth, twenty fourteen.
I make a motion that we approve the revised minutes for April twenty first and the minutes for May fifth, twenty fourteen.
All affairs say aye?
Aye.
This brings us to item number three. Four, canvas of returns of general, special election held on May tenth, twenty fourteen. I believe we all have the numbers and stuff that's here from Council Place Two showing Mr. Gerald Buckshad had ninety-nine votes, Mr. William Billy Ellis turned up with two-hundred-and-eleven. On Council Place Four showed Mr. Carr had eighty-six, and then it shows that Ms. Vicky Abrego showed up with two-thirty-one. As far as the proposition where the Ranspas Crunkwood Control Prevention District should not be continued and the tax prevention district sales and use of taxes should not, should be continued, yes or no? Yes, passed with two-thirty-nine, to no, sixty-three. This will bring us to item number five, consider an act, approving resolution twenty fourteen seventy-two eight, resolution declaring, order declaring results of the city election, city officers' election.
I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty fourteen seven twenty-eight, ordering, declaring the results of the city election.
All affairs say aye? Right now, I'd like to read the canvas of the general election. It says here, "I am Anchoa Mayor of Ranspas, Texas, met with the members of City Council, the city of Ranspas, Texas, sitting as the canvassing authority to the canvas of the general election on May tenth, twenty fourteen, on May nineteenth, twenty fourteen, at seven p.m. for Ranspas, Texas. I certify that the figures on the tally sheets correspond with the figures on the returns." And of course, the witness at hand on the nineteenth of May, twenty fourteen, myself and then the stonebreaker. I bring us to item number six, the oath of office and swearing in elected officials. Councilmember Place Two, Mr. William Billy Ellis, and Councilmember Place Four, Ms. Vicky Abrego, by the city attorney on the lines.
Well, the best of both, and well, the best of both abilities, the better of standing individuals, the herd of cats, the constitution of laws, the constitution of laws of the United States, the United States of this state, and the order, and the target, and all of these ordinances of the city. Further, more solemnly swear, further more solemnly swear that I am not directed, not directed, or indirectly, indirectly paid, offered, or promised, or granted, or provided, as I have been given, as I have been given, as the direction of the general direction,
So I bring us to item number seven, the presentation of certificate of elections to elected officials, being Councilmember Billy Ellis, and of course, for Place Four, This will bring us to item number eight, considering that, appointing Mayor Folton for the ensuing year.
I make a motion, we appoint Vicky Abrego as Mayor Folton.
I second that motion.
All affairs say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good work, Vicky.
Good job. Now bring us to item number nine, we have an award presentation by the Ranspas Police Chief Eric Blanchard, the officer Nick Harwood, for his life-saving act of becoming a live, a living volunteer stem cell donor for an infant with leukemia that is almost always fatal without a bone marrow transplant.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity for this work for council. Officer Harwood, he didn't really want us to do this publicly, but I don't believe that that sometimes he was going under the times. What he did was he had volunteered himself, walked back as a bone marrow donor, and he was contactive, and they made arrangements with him to donate his bone marrow. The thing was, is he's a new officer in this department, but I've worked with him for many years elsewhere, and he said, you know, he didn't even have the time to take off. He said, you know what, if it costs me, it costs me, I don't want to do it anymore. And I said, no, we'll work with you, so I got the silver, thought it was an awesome, awesome act. So what I'd like to do is present him with this award, appreciation, thank you for your acts of humanitarianism. You set a high mark for us all to achieve, appreciate your service, thank you very much.
Now bring us to item number ten, Mr. Chief Police, uh, Police Eric Blanchard, recognized as a hero.
Thank you, Council. Uh, this next one, I've actually not met the individual yet, just been representing all of them tonight, uh, but this past May ninth of two thousand and fourteen, we had a female whose vehicle drove off into, down the boat ramp, into the water. She panicked as she was trying to get out of the vehicle, she couldn't. These, uh, five individuals sprung into action and actually ripped door handles off of her vehicle trying to save her and get her out, ultimately with the head and carry the vehicle back, using the buoyancy of the vehicle in their favor. So, uh, I truly feel and believe that if not for their heroic actions, that female would have drowned, hadn't had experience with vehicles going in the water before. The individuals that came to her date that night, which was at ten forty-six p.m., very late at night out of the park, it's Captain Dave Dubnik, and he is here today, I believe. Captain Dave? Okay, well, I guess he wasn't able to make it. Harold Hugh Fisher from Fort Worth, Texas, Darwin Davis from Fort Worth, Texas, Darwin's child, Colton Davis from Fort Worth, Texas, and their, uh, Darwin's nephew, Sam Rogers from Fort Worth, Texas. Uh, we appreciate their lifesaving actions that day, and, uh, we just had the certificate of appreciation. This is Captain Dave's certificate that we would have awarded him to not have yet.
This will bring us to item number eleven, Texas A&amp;M University Corpus Christi, Master of Public Administration, A.
Uh, Mayor and Council, the, um, university, uh, as you're well aware, partnered with us to help us with, um, resolving some issues down at the Aquatic Center and also doing an evaluation of our fire department. Uh, the students are here, as is the professor, to present their findings. Jacob Ostrom, our very own Jacob Ostrom, uh, just recently graduated from the MPA program, and he was instrumental in some of the information they received, so.
Way to go, Jacob.
Oh, good evening, Council. My name is Chris Flores, I'm another recent graduate from the MPA's program, uh, this last weekend, and I'm representing the program evaluation classes, site assessment of your Aquatic Center tonight. You have a handout that's been given on the Aquatic Center, uh, that I'll be referring to throughout this short presentation. Next slide, please. Our, our assessment of the Aquatic Center was focused on four major areas, number one being facility usage, second, customer satisfaction, marketing, and then we looked into the budget analysis for fiscal year two thousand and thirteen, as well as did a little bit of research it, research and the possibility of privatization. So I want to present what we found and our recommendations, key recommendations. A full report of our findings and our assessment will be provided to Ms. Cario here shortly by Dr. Scott in the next week or so. Next slide, please. Uh, the purpose of the facility usage assessment team was to analyze who's come into the park, so admissions, records, uh, and to develop and improve record system to track future park usage. That data and that information is very valuable, uh, to the park. It shows what programs are being, are effective there in terms of revenue and that are providing that public service to the community, uh, that needs to use the park. So what they did was, uh, they analyzed five years' worth of park admissions data from two thousand and nine to two thousand and thirteen, and determined past use trends. They created a, uh, program review guideline document to help the, the park with self-assessment and program management oversight, and that's on handout one right there, that's what they came up with. So what we, some key findings from that facility usage assessment was that over that five-year period, there was inconsistent data, input of data management on admissions and revenue records. There was different data criteria fields, for instance, uh, when people would come to the park, some people would input, you know, categories like this is an adult, this is a resident, this is a seasoned pass holder, while other members would just put visitor and not put, not put the complete data. So it was kind of incomplete or inconsistent and hard to use that data to make decisions on, uh, for a program director. Uh, our second finding was, uh, the rentals and daily programs, that we didn't, there was inconsistency with that data as well, you know, who, what were the big rentals for the year, you know, how many parties did we have, is that a good program to have? That, those things were kind of sporadic in the data as well. Um, and another finding that, that that team found was that they, they think that management turnover, that over the last five years, there's been to high turnover rate in management of that facility. of that facility, may have led to the inconsistencies of managing the data upfront, who's coming in and out, records-keeping, and just having a standardized system, uh, to use that information. Uh, the next group looked at customer satisfaction. So what they did was evaluate current attitudes and determine the most popular services, that was their purpose, and they created a survey, that's handout number two. In a public administration, that, that's a huge tool for us. We survey the people that are using the park to find out what they want, what they like, uh, what is, um, most beneficial to them. We test piloted that survey, we had twenty-nine people fill it out on a, uh, spring break day, and, uh, we analyzed that data, and we built the park a template, which is, so they can dump, if they continue to use the survey, they can dump that data in there, and really track more valuable information over time. Uh, some key findings on that one day, that small sample, were this, the median age of people using the park is eighteen years old. Um, open swim was the most popular service, there's a lot of services offered there, but people just like to go and use the park. Uh, in, in comparison to the others, that was the most popular. Overall, customer satisfaction is, uh, I mean, I'm sorry, the customer service there is satisfactory, customers seem to, to feel like they're being served well when they enter the park. And then the last one, out-of-towners, seventy-two percent, and we thought that was a key finding. Most people that are using the park are not from Aransas Pass. But that, but again, just want to note for academic purposes, this is a very small sample, it would be better to continue to use it over time, we'll talk about that in recommendations to get better data. Uh, as far as marketing, we evaluated the current marketing activities and provided some recommend, uh, recommendations for an effective campaign, public campaign to, uh, promote a public facility. So we conducted a literature review on the marketing of public recreational facilities, evaluated current, current marketing efforts there at the park, and then created a small marketing plan, a basic one that we think would be effective, based on our studies of how it gets done in public facilities, and that's on handout number three. You can see some of those marketing ideas there. Next slide. So it's four key findings. Number one, literature cautions against over-commercialization of public services or public facilities, that we have to remember that, says we got to remember that public parks are used for the good of the public, and that they, and, and the academic world, they caution against over-commercializing a facility like that. Remember that it's not a revenue, you know, that the main purpose of the facility should not be revenue, it's more about public service. Um, so, finding two, the recommendation is to, literature suggests that a public entity should steer their marketing efforts towards something called the marketing concept, and this is a philosophy that touts building relationships with constituents, and educating them about the benefits of the services you offer, instead of marketing just for sales and revenues. And in that plan, it talks about, um, you know, creating partnerships with local public organization, like your school district, and other things like that, to, to, uh, increase usage, and have them involved, and making the community part, making the park part of the community, versus trying to, uh, entice them just for sales. Uh, and lastly, we, through their studies, I mean, I'm sorry, the third one is that marketing at the park right now is very minimal. There is a website with information on it, but there's not a lot of promoting of, hey, come to the park, not a lot of signs and things that'll, that'll help people get there, or if they come to Aransas Pass, do they know that that facility is there? So it's very minimal right now. Uh, and our last finding is that they recommend, or that the finding is that they believe the park needs to reconnect with the community, find ways to generate interest, and promote the benefits of having such a great facility like that in your community. Um, group four, we did a budget analysis, we did a budget analysis, and it did some exploration into possibly privatizing that facility. Uh, we did a literature review, and we were able to break down the two thousand and thirteen budget, what was budgeted, and what was actualized. So if you look at handouts four, um, A, B, and C, that's the budget breakdown for two thousand and thirteen, we'll talk about that in a second. And then we did some research on RFPs, um, that's a requ, request for proposal, that's what most cities do when they put a bid out to a, a, a private organization to come in and take over services like that. We have a couple in our final report that we're going to provide, that were samples, um, from the Corpus Christi, uh, privatization of their municipal golf courses, and how that went. So you have those as, as a template. Uh, some key findings from the budget, uh, we did a literature review, and it says that people favor, um, privatizing, just specializing, specialized parts of a public facility, not the whole thing. Uh, what, some of the things they talked about in there were like beverage operations, concessions, maybe, uh, special equipment rentals, they're okay with private companies coming in right there. But again, it's important to remember that the purpose of swimming pools, uh, public swimming pools are for things like crime prevention, keeping youth, uh, off the streets for the summer, and having given them something constructive to do, uh, intended to support, uh, socializing among community members, to have those kind, you know, functions there, um, public safety for people to learn how to swim, you know, especially in a local coastal area like this, and those type of things. Uh, so they want, the literature says, keep the park public, and just privatize the little functions that we may be struggling with as public managers. Um, the second finding was that feasibility studies are highly recommended when putting in big parks like this, or big, uh, facilities like this, it's a best practice, uh, before you put it in, but it's just, that, that was part of the literature in the finding, that, you know, you put these things in to determine whether it's feasible to operate a pool, a successful community facility, does it better meet the needs of area residents, uh, is it cost-effective, you know, is the size and scale, and is it safe, is it going to meet all of the safety regulations? So, that, we found that in the literature. All the public pools municipalities have feasibility, lengthy feasibility set, uh, studies before they put one of these in. And then finding three, we found that communities with the above national per capita income, which is fifty-one thousand, have successful aquatic centers that can, that are self-sustaining. So that, that was something else we found in the literature. Next slide, please. So now, now to the budget, if you look at, um, four alpha, this is an overall, this is kind of in the middle of that handout, bottom line is that revenues, the projected revenues for two thousand and thirteen, uh, the actual numbers came in under budget, didn't quite make what was projected. The expenditures, what was budgeted to spend there, we were over-budget, we spent more than what we said we were going to spend on the Aquatic Center. And lastly, with the general funds transfer to sustain the Aquatic Center, if you do, well, we did a budget variance there, uh, came out to a total of about a hundred, two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand dollars is what, is the cost to the city per, in two thousand and thirteen, overall. Uh, if you look at four, continue to look at four alpha, the revenue line items that came under budget, which means we projected we were going to make this much and came in, uh, offshore, was income daily entry, so we thought we was going to, it was going to be used a lot more than what it was in two thousand and thirteen. And concessions, uh, we budgeted, we were going to make this much, we came in under budget there. Some key expenditures that were over-budget, which means things, um, that we said we were going to spend a certain amount on, we ended up spending more, were salaries and associated expenses, so salaries, uh, health care costs, those type of things associated with salaries were over-budget, and that was the number one item. Uh, number two, concession supplies, capital outlay, and then two utilities, two key utilities, natural gas and pool chemicals, were way, were way over-budget, you can see that, I'm sorry, on four B, that's the expenditure breakdown on that handout. And, um, and then the last key finding on the budget was that there was nine thousand dollars, there was a nine thousand dollar savings on building maintenance, and we thought that was a key finding because we found from the staff, as our study from the staff and visitors, that maintenance was a concern. So we were wondering why, you know, or we thought maybe it was an issue that we didn't spend that remaining nine thousand dollars to renovate, clean, or whatever for that fiscal year. And our last budget on key finding, our last key findings for budget is an interesting one, and one, and it's a good one, it's kind of a positive, that's why I put it at the end. If you look at a comparison of national, the national average for cost recovery is twenty-seven percent for public pools, so cost recovery is a financial benchmark that many cities use to compare financial performance in departments, and it's defined as total revenues as a percent of expenditures, which is, if I spend a hundred dollars, how much of that hundred dollars am I getting back in revenue? And the national average is twenty-seven dollars per hundred dollars. Now Aransas Pass is getting fifty-six dollars back per hundred dollars, which is outperforming the national average, and outperforming some of these other cities that we got information on with their aquatic centers. And the big takeaway from this is to, is that aquatic facilities are not lucrative enterprise functions for most cities, most cities run these aquatic centers at a cost. And lastly, we have a, a few recommendations based on all these findings. Uh, facility usage, uh, we just recommend that we standardize that point-of-sale system, whatever you have at the front, standardize, everybody knows how to use it, collecting financial and data, uh, usage data of who's coming, when they're coming, uh, their age and all that, and just standardize that, and train all the staff to use it, regardless of who's in charge of the facility. Uh, to conduct a review of daily operations, to ensure that accountability of customers going in and out of the facility, we, we found that that was the control point was an issue, who's coming, who's going, what time are they leaving, are we recharging people or not? That, that needs to be supervised a little bit better. We recommend that we continue to use that survey that we created, put that data into that template that we provided for you, to gather information about satisfaction and go ahead in the future, so you can adjust your programs if required. Uh, the marketing teams says to evaluate the image of the Aquatic Center, to, to bring in your local high school, your boy scouts, bring in some media events, it's in the, it's in their recommendation, their business plan, marketing plan. Uh, and just find ways to bring attention to that Aquatic Center in a positive way to, to up its image, and to increase, uh, awareness with low-cost things, like maybe some banners or some signs in key locations during high travel time or high peak time, um, to use that facility. Um, the budget team recommends to do a five-year historical trend analysis, because a big part of why we came under budget, we figure is just that the predictions for two thousand and thirteen weren't based on solid foundations. So if you do that trend analysis, how much, what's going on over the last five years, you can predict a little bit better for the future. Uh, we also recommend either cutting staff or hours to remain within budget, because that was a big, uh, expenditure overspending for the year. And then lastly, a few more, to budget less, um, you know, we, I think, if you see, if you look at your handout, they expected, um, you know, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars worth of people coming in, and it was more closer to two hundred, so we budget less, that two hundred and thirty-six K just shrinks. It's all about budgeting right for the future. Uh, to look into that natural gas, uh, utilities expenses, to see if they're reoccurring, or if this is a one-time thing, so we can, um, manage that in the future. To use all the maintenance dollars allocated, to make sure we have a comprehensive building-maintenance plan, use it, clean it. And lastly, um, just consider privatizing concessions only, we think that could be a good way ahead to get a private, um, organization in, into the Aquatic Center, and help, um, make the park look more, um, business-like and professional, I guess. And then lastly, uh, for privatization, for all future major projects, to do that feasibility study, and make sure that it's the right thing for the city of Aransas Pass. That concludes my presentation, I'm open for any questions.
Just a lot to think about in the future.
Yeah.
And Councilor, what, what do they have in place right now for monitoring the, the entrance, or will people come in to charge, or?
We, we just put a point-of-sale system in, we just put a point-of-sale system, we invested about two thousand dollars for a really simplified system, but it would, um, track, we've trained the staff. Is it the long-term? No, it's just a short-term, um, our auditor, uh, helped us put something in, because that was an issue with the audit as well, tracking, tracking the revenue.
Okay. So when, when, before that, there was nothing in place?
They did a, um, they asked a question, and it was a, okay, charge, charge this, there was no formal tracking mechanism.
Okay, because we were led to believe, I know on the MDD board, that they had implemented something in previous.
Well, I'll tell you, they had something, but it, for example, it showed a negative eleven hundred inventory of Snickers bars, when we first went and started doing the audit, and started doing a review of the books, and obviously, they found it was inconsistent entering, it was inconsistent, so we couldn't rely on any of the data.
Yeah, there, there was a system, but it just was, staff was not trained on how to use it effectively, and, and I don't think we could really assess the system that well, because the data was, was sporadic at best, for now.
That went part and parcel, with not just revenue, admissions, tracking who's coming and what age groups, is what, because it all, it all feeds in. But I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the fifty-six percent and the twenty-six percent, we don't have any debt service in that dollar, uh, amount, so those others, I don't know that the other municipalities, we talked about this when they did their presentation, if there's any dirt, debt service incorporated in that, obviously that'll bring that number down. MDD has taken that debt service, and so it's not shown in the balance sheet for the Aquatic Center. So, um, while I think it's good, it shows that, that we're, cost recovery better than some of theirs, I don't know that that's an actual, if we put the debt service back in, where does that drive that number? But it's, it's a great benchmark, and, I mean, he said it, he said it appropriately, we left money on the table for maintenance, and yet we were over-budget on salaries and and natural gas, and, and why were those things occurring? So, those are all questions as we go into this budget year, better planning.
Because last year, we had to give extra money for the pool for the maintenance, correct?
We did, we transferred additional monies, uh-huh. We did have a heater that was out, there were some in the year prior, in the season prior that I got here, there, they were down for one of the busy seasons around the spring break time as well, and so that drove the revenue down, um, and then there was some needed repairs, so the general fund did give additional assistance this year to get the furniture and, and just do a minimal facelift.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilman Sylvia, I'm Dr. Dan Jorgensen from Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi, and, uh, as Sylvia is looking for the PowerPoint there. Um, I'm here to, uh, present the capstone classes, uh, organizational assessment of the fire department. Jake was on the, the team, uh, along with, uh, five others, um, because of their schedules, nobody was able to, uh, present, and so I got the wonderful job of presenting for the class. Um, I, I think one of the things that was, um, uh, unique about our project, uh, as opposed to the swimming center, was, um, when we were initially contacted by Sylvia, she had a, a very broad, we need to start doing something with the fire department question, where do we start? And so, uh, one of the first things that the, uh, class had to do was decide what the scope of the project was going to be, that they were going to work on, and what they had come up with were, um, three particular areas and recommendations. And, uh, the first area was to identify the current resources, um, look at the risk assessment that is taking place with the fire department, uh, look at those effects on the ISO ratings for, um, the city of, uh, Aransas Pass, and then, uh, provide some recommendations. So that's, uh, kind of how we're going to go and look at the project, uh, thus far. So if you take a look at the, the current resources, uh, we looked at, at the physical capital resources, and, uh, as you can, when you come to City Hall, of course, uh, see the fire department, um, one of the things that, you know, we have to be aware of is, uh, that the department was built in nineteen eighty-three, and so, um, the, the functionality and the depreciation of the facility is a concern as it is becoming older, um, we have to make sure that we are continually investing the dollars, uh, needed into, uh, that real property facility. Um, also a major concern is the aging and limited vehicle inventory. If you take a look at the inventory, and once again, the, the actual project will be, um, handed over to Sylvia in the next week or so, but if you take a, a look at the actual inventory, uh, of the vehicles, um, they are, most of the vehicles are used when they were purchased, um, they are getting older, um, and there is a concern there with regard to the vehicles, and additionally, um, the idea that there are very few backup vehicles. If one vehicle breaks down, if your pumper breaks down, you don't have a backup pumper, that's, you're, you're just out of luck. Um, so, there are those issues, and then the constant. So there are those issues and then the constant need for facility and equipment repairs. So those physical capital resources are a big concern as we look at the fire department. And then there are also those human capital resources. In terms of the numbers of firemen that are working, because of the recent changes, the way you staff the fire department, if you look at the fully professional fire department, it truly is a very small number and as you probably are all aware, right now, the size of the department does not meet the National Fire Protection Association's two-in, two-out requirement for fighting a fire. So that is hurting you in terms of safety, right? And it's hurting you in terms of response and compliance because if you are going to a major fire, you have to wait for a backup fire department to be there, to be in compliance with the two-in, two-out requirement. Also, the idea of the scheduling of the human resources. I know when Sylvia talked to this, she said, well, you've got to make some sense out of that schedule that they have. Apparently, it's twenty-four on, forty-eight off, and then every third week, you get five hours overtime to keep the overtime equal across everyone. And when the class looked at the scheduling, they've basically, and they have found out through the class and their assessment, that you really can do the twenty-four on, forty-eight off without messing around with that five hours overtime. And one of our recommendations is that you actually just budget that as an overtime and not budget it in terms, or not put it in terms of a scheduling. And then you look at the fiscal resources. The general fund allotted a little over seven-hundred thousand in 2013 and that accounts for ten to twelve percent of the general fund for the city, which is really pretty good. Usually, fire resources, public safety resources, take up a little more than that. And so the fire department is running very efficiently in terms of those fiscal resources. In looking at risk assessment, they were, the class was not able to find any specific risk assessment that was done here locally by the department. Any risk assessment that has been done with regard to Aransas Pass, it has been done by the COG. And so there has nothing been done here locally. The issue with the COG is while there is a risk assessment, they're doing it for a very broad area, they're doing it, I mean, as a seven-county response instead of a Aransas Pass response. They have done the 2011 mitigation plan, they have the software capabilities. And so what I'm trying to say is COG has done a very good, broad, general risk assessment plan that you could build on here, but we need to start building on something locally from that COG plan. Go ahead, Sylvia. One of the things that, of course, is most concerned when you take a look at risk assessment is the ISO rating and the PPC evaluation project. Of course, right now, there is some concern that the ISO rating may go up or down, become less favorable, which of course could have some ramifications throughout the entire city, not only with regard to the city, but also the residents of the city. If you take a look at the ISO rating process, there are four elements. And I'm not going to go through all four, but the fire department is fifty percent of that in terms of rating. So some changes in the fire department can make a huge difference in your ISO rating. Another area is water supply. That's forty percent, okay? And so if you put the fire department and water supply together, you got about ninety percent, well, they add five-point-five points so you can get over a hundred percent, so anyway, we aren't going to talk about the math there. But a huge, huge portion of what the ISO rating is something that you can control here in city council in terms of the fire department and how you plan for your water Of course, the effects on the ISO rating, September 2013, there is a proposed retrogression from four to five. Due, and when they contacted the ISO, it was due to the department's ability for structural firefighting, particularly the issues of firefighting capacity, the fire department and water supply, the water issues. So our recommendations with regard to physical capital, you know, we have to look at the depreciation issues which are going on within the fire department, particularly backup capability for key pieces of fire equipment. It's a major concern that you have fire equipment and maybe not just trucks, but backup pumps, other backup capabilities if one of your pieces of equipment goes down. When you talk about human capital, quite frankly, you need more folks on staff. Now, I realize that there's been a change, the way you've taken what was the volunteer association, the way the course or the class kind of figured it out, that your minimum staff, you'd probably need twelve people and a chief. And that's because that additional firefighter on each rotation would help meet the two-in, two-out standard. The thing is, once again, they don't all have to be paid, but if you're going to do a volunteer force, you have to understand that volunteer force isn't just asking for folks to show up. That if you're going to do a volunteer force, it almost has to be as professional as hiring somebody. That I always like to point out Driscoll Hospital in terms of volunteer management. And most of them, most people don't realize that Driscoll's budget for volunteer and their volunteer department exceeds something like three-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars a year. Volunteers are not free, right? And so it's important that if you are looking at a volunteer force, that you set requirements and you set a professional standard for the volunteers and you set accountability requirements to make them accountable to those things. And with that, also then creating a true and continuous twenty-four-hour, twenty-four-off rotation and put overtime into firefighters who are being called in on their days off if that's required. If we take a look at fiscal capital, I think capital budgeting is real important for the fire department, that you start creating a capital budget realizing you're not going to do this all at once. And so if we are going to do this over a period of time, a capital budget can help that. It will show your long-term commitment in terms of a council to both the community and to the ISO folks. And so I think that's a real important aspect of looking at, you know, what you can do fiscally is that capital budget for the department. ISO ratings, you've got to start working with the COG, but also start working in gathering local data with regard to addressing the emergency issues throughout the community. Once again, the COG plan is very broad and you've got to start pinpointing that down locally. And just looking for some key components of that, you've got to get, and this is data that the class tried to put together and had difficult time doing that in the fifteen weeks that we had. And that's data regarding land use, housing units, key commercial areas, key commercial buildings, descriptive statistics about other critical variables over time, and start doing some benchmarking. One good point is that cities the size of Aransas Pass typically don't benchmark. You would be something that would be in terms of a leader and you could kind of set the stage for other communities of your size if you would start doing something like this. There's a small scale there that shows basically, I think it's, is that Wester, the last, Webster? Webster, Texas, is about the only small community in Texas that they could find that is doing some significant benchmarking. And so it would be nice to have Aransas Pass in there in terms of benchmarking and work with other communities of your size to start benchmarking some of this data. The other thing is starting to work with regard to risk assessment. And the key thing is you don't have to reinvent the wheel there. There are a number of risk assessment, portfolios, risk assessment, templates out there to start, you know, looking at risk assessment. What do you have to do? Well, the things that you have to do is get some people together to identify what are the key risks here in Aransas Pass. I mean, we know hurricane is a key risk. We know brush fire is a key risk, right? We know flooding might be a key risk. And so what are those high risks in the area? And then you have to decide, okay, at what level are we going to start working? The more detailed you get, of course, the more the ISO is going to like what you do. But I would say first you have to start with the city and then you could go down to different areas of the city, do, down to specific, if you have, redo Con Brown Harbor and decide, okay, we want to do just a risk assessment for the harbor. You could do that. So it's important, though, that you come together with some type of plan in terms of how you're going to look at risk assessment. And so that's my, the course's suggestions is start simple, use that Centers for Disease Control template, utilize the information provided by the COG, come up with a list of critical community assets and credible threats and, you know, start working and eliminating them one by one. Once again, remember, there aren't a lot of cities your size doing this, so anything you do is going to, first of all, impress the ISO folks and is going to be, you know, leading in terms of your size of a community. The other is, as I said, the benchmarking data. What kind of benchmarking data are we looking for? Well, if you look at what ISO is considered, concerned with, they're looking at first alarm response, they're looking at initial attack, they're looking at how you are keeping data on your equipment, its pumping capacity, what reserve apparatus you have, who are the company personnel, what kind of training are they getting? Other performance measures, you know, can vary from city to city. The neat thing about that is that you already have the tool in place to do it and that's the data management system that is currently in your fire department called Firehouse. Some of the students worked on the Firehouse program, were able to pull up some data, that's in the actual report. But Firehouse has the capacity to gather that data for you in terms of the physical resources, what we've talked about. Firehouse can help clock the pumper tests so that when the fire department's out there testing their pumpers, they can enter that data in Firehouse so that when ISO comes and says, well, we need a report as to how many times you guys have tested the pumper, you aren't sitting there thinking, wow, when was that that we tested the pumper? Was that last May or was that in March? You have the data there in Firehouse to report it. Hose tests, when you tested the couplings, when you tested the nozzles, when you did the last service testing of the hose. Also, in terms of your ladder and elevating platforms, when all those tests were done. Actually, the Firehouse program enters all that data and can keep all that data for you. It also can keep the data with regard to human resources. Firehouse can be your staff scheduling tool. It can also keep track of staff training. And once again, Firehouse can help with the area of risk assessment. It can help with your pre-planning. It can help with inspections. If there is a regular team that goes around and just does at random fire inspections, you can enter that data in there. It helps with permits, it helps with water capacity issues, you can enter that data in there. Probably even more important than that is the incident reporting. You can report incidents in terms of the times of the incidents, the type of the incidents, the critical nature of the incident, how many, and so that risk assessment piece just feeds back into what you need to do. The other thing is that you can now then use that Firehouse data to address those fiscal issues that, you know, we had talked about in terms of accounting and cost recovery. Are there different ways that we can look at cost recovery? One of the things, you know, that we have to realize is that nationally, and I don't know, once again, if Aransas Pass fits this model, but I think, what is it, something like eighty, or eighty percent of all fire calls now are not actually fires, but they're medical services? You know, so how are we responding to eighty percent of, I mean, are eighty percent of our calls actually medical calls? And if that's the case, how are we responding? Is there a cost recovery mechanism that we might be able to use to help with other areas in terms of insurance, that type of thing? Also, that Firehouse data can then help you with your strategic planning in terms of what you want to do with the fire department. What is the, what are the goals of the fire department in terms of being able to be out there and service the customers? And finally, tying in that water resource, what, in terms of where do we predict the growth, where's the growth occurring here in Aransas Pass? What are the land use characters of the property and what is the urban planning of the property to make sure that we have proper water supply to match those land uses and planning needs? Because you could do everything else, but if you aren't doing that planning in terms of urban planning, water supply, you're not addressing forty percent of the ISO issue and rating. So any questions, comments, or concerns? I'm sure Jacob could probably answer things more specifically since he was on the team that gathered all the data and I'm just kind of summarizing what I read in the report that I got last Wednesday. That's why it's not to you, yada.
Mayor and Council, I wanted to point out the drop from four to five. We are in discussion with the ISO rating, but it is exactly the water supply. It's our one-inch and two-inch water lines that are across the city that make it difficult to fight a fire and make it difficult for adequate water pressure when the fire truck actually gets there. And obviously, the two-in and two-out policy, that's really, really critical. But most of our point deduction has been in our water supply. And we do have Firehouse, we're just not using it to its full capacity.
Yeah, I think just from what the students were talking about that kind of got in there and messed around with it, that a little bit of training and having somebody that is fairly versed in that Firehouse program could be just, I mean, a wealth of information for the fire department and for the city in terms of what you should be doing in terms of fire response and emergency response.
Was it the lack of effort or?
Well, I think it was two things at one point, a lack of IT infrastructure connecting the system here and then also just lack of training. If you don't, if the staff doesn't understand why something's important, they're not going to do it. And when their livelihood and when the strategic plan and the community's rating is explained why it's important to do it, then folks, then the trigger begins to happen. And it is a matter of making that why connection and making it important and making it an everyday task. They use it in Corpus, it integrates with Eric's things. We have so many systems at our fingertips right now that we're not using.
Yes.
Yes, that's right. Yes. That's great.
Yeah.
Okay. The aquatic center, we did hire a park and recreation director. She's in the audience, I'd like her to stand up. Her name is Manuela Camarillo. She goes by Manny. She's been introduced to the staff, she's met with the park staff, she's been at the aquatic center. She will be housed at Public Works and also have an office at Community Park while all of the renovations and all of the progress is taking place. We're going to be revamping Public Works altogether, splitting maybe the streets and the parks group. Paul's on vacation when he comes back, situating that and making sure the staff's as efficient as possible.
Welcome to the city of Aransas Pass family.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Congratulations again, Mayor. Can you walk the stage last, Madge?
Yes, ma'am.
This is Title Number Twelve, the city of Aransas Pass Audit Fiscal Year 2012 to 2013.
Wait, Council, we're going to pass.
This brings title number twelve, City Ranss Pass Audit for the School Year 2012 to 2013.
Wait, Council, we're going to pass on that item. There were some questions still to be resolved with the audit and the Board Council, so it'll be presented at the next Council meeting.
Number thirteen, considering after request, Mr. John Maldonado, St. Mary's Star of the Sea Catholic Church, close right street between Goodnight Avenue and Wilson Avenue from nine thirty AM to eight PM, Brother Six Annual Fall Festival on Saturdays, September twenty twenty.
Yes, so thanks for allowing me to address you. Yeah, we're having our sixth annual fall festival this September the twentieth, again, at St. Mary's Star of the Sea Catholic Church. And in the past, you've approved us closing down right street between Goodnight and Wilson to allow us to have our booth set up on that street and allow people to commute, you know, to commute back and forth and walk across the street from the church across to the vacant lot across the street that we use for other things. And we come to you tonight to request, do we do that again, if you approve us doing that again this year?
Any questions? Stop. Right.
Thank you.
I want to make a motion that we grant the request for St. Mary's Star of the Sea Catholic Church to close right street between Goodnight Avenue and Wilson Avenue from nine thirty AM to eight PM for their sixth annual fall festival on Saturdays, September the twentieth.
On first, aye?
Aye.
I'm standing for that. That's for church. Good deal. Number fourteen, considering after request, Mr. Fred Diasus for the Ranss Pass High School twenty-fifth annual project graduation for use of the Ranss Pass Aquatic Center and lifeguards on graduation night of Friday, June the sixth, twenty fourteen, from midnight till two AM.
No doubt. It's a, it's a standard request to use the Aquatic Center and the lifeguards.
I make a motion that we approve the request for project graduation at the Aquatic Center and lifeguards on June sixth, twenty fourteen, from midnight to two AM.
Second.
On first, aye?
Aye.
Number fifteen, considering that, on purchase of an outdoor movie theater package in order to create movies in the harbor program.
Mayor Council, earlier in twenty thirteen, you allowed me to go out and explore the purchase of the system. We did survey other cities our size and the most popular system is the one we're proposing to purchase. It is sort of a blow-up type screen that withstands up to thirty-five miles an hour. It is budgeted out of the harbor fund is where the money would come from. Later on in the package, you're going to see where we're going to ask our nonprofits to be able to participate in the sale of goods and items. And it is in an effort to bring more public awareness, more public participation down in the harbor, and we would start the movies in the summer.
Thirty-five miles per hour, is that going to hold up down there?
Well, I'll ask our prior harbor maps for what the winds used to, used to be down there all.
Normally fifteen to twenty-five. I don't want to be the one holding the road.
Yeah.
We lose you, Bill.
What location are we looking at setting up?
It would not be at the billboard location, it'd probably be at the concrete, the concrete slab that's up there, so there'd be just a natural overlook and let everybody still park within the parking and carve out that area where people can be seated and bring their, bring their blankets and things. We'd have to create a traffic plan to make sure people can go in and out and it's pedestrian-friendly. That's the proposed plan, it just depends on what the traffic plan would look like, but it would be down at Harbor Point Park. And the, the amount that's stipulated is only the cost of the actual system. Every movie that we purchased, depending on how new the movie is, is anywhere from a hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars. The three hundred dollar movies are those that are still actually showing at the Dollar Cinema that we would be able to show down here. The hundred and fifty dollar movies are a little bit older movies.
So does this include audio?
Frozen down. I'm sorry.
Does this include audio also?
Yes, and it's, it's a fully enclosed system. It's used in Fredericksburg, it's used in a couple of other cities for movies in the park.
Do I hear a motion for approval, number fifteen? May I make a motion that we approve the purchase of that little movie theater package in order to create movies in the harbor program?
Second.
On first, aye?
Aye.
That brings us to the next item of creating a lottery system. We, we are having more public events down in the harbor as well as down, the Fourth of July show down at Community Park. And we've been approached by several nonprofits here for an opportunity for fundraising. So we thought this was a perfect opportunity to institute a lottery program for the nonprofits. They could apply for the sale of goods and services down there, and with every event, we would draw a lottery, and that would be who can receive the profits from whatever the goods and sale, or the goods and services are that are going to be for sale. So we just picked three categories, food, beverage, and then other novelties, so to speak. And, you know, the stipulation that they wouldn't ask city to purchase the material that they want to sell. They'd have to at least be able to purchase that. And then some, some stipulations, they must be an eligible nonprofit, they have to be in good standing with the state and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Do I hear approval for, I don't know, sixteen? Motion?
Well, I make a motion that we create a lottery system for nonprofit organizations to participate in future city events as fundraising opportunities.
Second, the motion.
On first, aye?
Aye.
Aye. And we did give you a draft permit application that they would, they would use.
Number seventeen, considering that on revision to Mr. Rolapena's facility license agreement.
I, I thought we were, I thought we were done with this, but he's apparently been approached, our, ours, the word has gotten out that we're going to be improving our softball fields, and so he's been approached by other teams to want to use the field, and so he wants to add a stipulation for two hundred dollars for additional days if he has people approach to be able to increase his monthly rent to us in order to allow for an additional day of.
That'd be going for our new parks director.
I'm sorry. No, this was, he asked for this before he started.
Going forward, he would go.
Yes, going forward, she, yeah, she's going to be negotiating with Mr. Penya from now on.
Okay. So he just wants one more?
Well, it's two hundred dollars for any, for additional days.
Any additional days, okay.
Well, I make a motion that we approve Mr. Penya's request of the change in his facility license agreement.
My second.
On first, aye?
Aye.
Okay, number eighteen's going to be a good one. Considering that, inspection department items. To start with, A, was the proposed development agreement for Dustin Spears. Property is described as tract eight, block two oh four, Burton and Danforth, five acres, West Stoddard Avenue, Ranss Pass, Texas. Property is owned, R sixteen, single-family, brother.
Mayor Council, at the last meeting, you approved the development agreement portion, and we went back and reviewed the cost to extend for Mr. Spears. The total cost of extension for water, sewer, and a minimal street in that section is two hundred and, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, I believe is the, is the amount that's in your packet. We did receive a contractor's estimate, that is not staff's estimate, that is actual go-out-measure linear foot. We did a breakout over, it's two hundred and twenty thousand. We did a breakout over what you also approved pro-rata share of Mr. Spears's fair share of that line. And so it's nine hundred linear feet of water extension, twenty-three hundred linear feet of wastewater extension, and thirteen hundred linear feet of street. He wouldn't be responsible for all of that. He would have to pay eighteen thousand, nine fifty for water, twenty-five thousand, six twenty for wastewater, and six thousand, seven hundred and fifty for street, which is a total of fifty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty, which to develop five unserved acres is very reasonable. And to break that out over ten years is a monthly payment of five hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents, which is using the city's four percent interest plus the half a percent. So we'd, we'd in essence charge him four and a half percent interest on that fifty-one thousand dollars. And again, that's in today's dollars, that's, we have an account, future cost of money. So five hundred and thirty-one dollars is what Mr. Spears would pay the city in order to extend those. I know at Planning Commission, he wasn't happy about the amounts, and I continue to remind Council that that's a sunk cost that the city's going to have to make. We're going to put in two hundred and twenty and get it back over a stated period of time. In Mr. Spears's case, it'll take us ten years to get back fifty-one thousand dollars. Once other people start connecting, we may receive that two hundred and twenty a lot faster, but that, that is the initial sunk cost for the city to extend water, sewer, and minimal street to that, that section.
How quick would we add sewer out to that section now?
It would depend on the plan. It'd have to depend on the engineering and how soon we could free up two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Well, I guess my point would be if we're not ready to run sewer out to that direction, he, that would be a cost that he couldn't incur for ten years, let's say if we didn't get there in ten years.
And that's, that's the refund provision you put in the last. If we didn't reach him within seven years, he gets his money back, plus the interest that he paid in. We had the discussion at Planning Commission about, well, he should be allowed to go on septic because he's so far. And again, I remind you that we're looking at a density issue. We have a density issue. He's on five acres that's zoned R seven, that's potential for twenty units. He says he's only going to build one unit. How do we recoup that two hundred and twenty if those densities stay at one unit per acre because we continue to allow people to put septic out there? Because you move a little bit over off Stoddard and you have McClung, and then you move a little bit over and you've got all the other streets that are also underserved. Now, I also had the question posed, well, we're going to serve down Highland, and what is the difference between the Dalarossas, who you're going to hear from in just a minute, who are serving, who are being served on McClung and only have to pay their tap fee today and promise to tie on with them? And, and again, I talked to you about it's a capacity issue. We're opening up Highland as a capacity issue, as bringing up D barriers adding to the city. There is no strategic reason to open up Stoddard and Greenwood with the densities that are there. So yes, those types of costs are borne by the person who initially wants to develop the area. If the property was on Highland or Johnson or some of those areas, obviously that drives his cost down because the city has a strategic need to build that infrastructure. And so we would bear the brunt of the cost. Stoddard in that area has no strategic need for us at this particular moment in time. And so the cost is, is borne by the developer. And that, I don't have a better way around that.
So what, what would be the cost of just this actual street itself?
Sixty-seven, six, his portion of the street, sixty-seven hundred dollars, and that's, that's.
And then if you would just let him do a septic and then a water well, and then whenever we have the money to do that, and then have him come back and pay or whatever?
That, that defeats the purpose of orderly development. You don't want well and septic in your city limits. I mean, it's, it's Council's decision to decide that, but you're, you're defeating the purpose and we're digging a hole that is very difficult to get out of because there's no money coming into that sewer, that water and sewer fund to build those lines later on. There's no money coming in. If he's on septic and well, he's not paying any of the.
So then at what point is there, we're going to have money coming in and keep telling people like him, hey, you can't come in because you don't want, you can't afford it, or you just wait till you get somebody that can afford it to come into the city of Aransas Pass and build a house?
Unfortunately, if you pick an area that's underserved like that, yes, because you don't want a colonia to grow in an area that isn't ready to be served, and that area is not ready to be served.
So if that would have been the case, a lot of houses would not have been built here in Aransas Pass.
That's right, and if that were the case, our ISO rating might be a little higher because right now we're separated with one and two inch water lines.
And that, that iOS thing is just about property, the insurance for each property owner, right?
Yes, it's the fire policy for each property, so.
It's towards all about the insurance that you're going to pay.
Yes, 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 it's the economic impact of that.
So we just continue to tell them you can't come over here and build?
No.
Can I come over here and put a septic system and water well because we're exactly what you're saying?
That's my recommendation, yes.
I, I just wondered, ten years, can we extend that longer to lower the cost from five thirty-one?
You, well, our, the ordinance that you approved was a ten-year development agreement. We'd have to amend, we'd have to amend that to extend that out. But I remind you again, that two twenty is the city's sunk cost in the beginning to extend, so.
That's, that's going to come out of our.
So we have to find that two twenty from somewhere.
So it, and like in the future, we can rely on some kind of property bonds or bonds or issues of wherever we can get that money from?
Yes.
To be able to put that, those streets and whether they have a septic system that's just in the ground? I don't know.
We have another bond sale coming up in eighteen to twenty-four months, and maybe that's one of the streets we look at. Today, this bond sale is, most of the money is going into the capacity issue that we have. Later on, I mean, there, there's other mechanisms in the code to help pay for things, but they're called public improvement districts, they're called those kinds of things, and in the end, it really is, we take this fifty-one thousand, we sell bonds and pay that money back for that fifty-one thousand. It's on the city's good faith and credit, so if he defaults, it's still our nickel. It takes back from the nine and a half million we're about to borrow to put into the parks and everything else, just like they didn't go for ten million because we were about to get the fire truck and all of those things, so.
So, so we're better off just saying, you as a person, you're better off holding off till later so you can move into Aransas Pass and build a house so we can not have those unimproved properties within the city limits?
Well, I remind you, his property, right now on the appraisal district, is less than sixty thousand dollars. If he builds a two hundred thousand dollar house, let's say, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars at our tax rate, the city would probably receive about twelve to thirteen hundred dollars a year.
Well, I'm just having a hard time because it's, it's inside the city limits and it is called Aransas Pass, and the only way to develop it is to allow people like him to come in here and build the house so eventually we can get to where anybody else coming into the town, you know, you put that little stipulation and say, you know what, before you can buy a lot, get with whatever chamber, the chamber, whatever real estate company actually, to be able to put it out there to where we don't have issues like his.
That's been in the code, it's been in the code since fifty-nine.
I understand that, but it was not applied.
And I, and I know what you're trying to say, and I know we're, we're kind of in a hard place right in here because of the fact that we're in the situation we are because we have allowed it in the past. And if we, and if we continue to allow it, it's, we're still going to be in the same situation, we're not ever, we're not ever going to get out of this particular predicament that we're in. We're still going to have properties that are not going to have the service because we're allowing them to go ahead and do that, and go ahead and do this. And so that's, I mean, we're, we're, I know that he's in the middle of it, and.
I go back to the, I go back to the presentation on fire. Okay, we allow him to go on a well, there's no hydrant near him. We have to service him when the fire truck comes. The fire truck can't even get down the street, it can't, and so there's no water to him, so we continue to exacerbate our issue.
This is not going to be the only one around the city of Ranss?
No, it is absolutely not, and, and these are some of the very, very hard decisions to make on development, very, very hard decisions. And it, it comes down to what he's putting in has to be spread among eighty-two hundred people. Eighty-two hundred people have to find that two hundred and twenty thousand dollars initially to put it in.
I've got something to say. Originally, I contacted Ms. Carrillo earlier this week or so, or last week it was, in order, because I was not happy with the agreement that came out last time at the Planning and Zoning Committee. I tried to contact her, got received, no call back. I asked for the paperwork so I could make an educational decision on what I wanted to do with this, and I still never received it. But me and my fiance were talking, and we were thinking about splitting the cost of the road directly down the middle with the city, because technically that is the city's road, there are houses out there that have city addresses, there is water lines out there, and I would be willing to pay for the water line and half of what the cost of the street is from my portion. So my portion is sixty-seven hundred dollars, just put that directly into, and we'll go about it that way. But I will not, I repeat, I will not fork out fifty-one thousand dollars for this property. I will pay it off and move to Orange Grove or Bunzer or whatever and build my properties out there. And just for the record, Mrs. Carrillo, I'm not developing twenty houses, I'm developing one. That's it.
I can't, I can't go on that, it's the zoning, it is not because I don't believe you're only going to develop one.
It's a single, it's a single house, single zoning, it's R sixteen.
I believe it derelicts my responsibility of planning a city if we don't plan it to the most intense use. Those, those water lines do not, they belong to the ratepayers. Those water and sewer lines belong to the ratepayers who pay into that system every single month.
Okay, we're, we're talking about putting in a six-inch vein, right? Six-inch water vein with two fire hydrants?
At a minimum.
And that was an eighteen thousand dollar cost for the water?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm willing to work with you on that, and half of the street, I'm not paying up. I'm not paying the full cost of the street because there's two other residents, it's four. There's four other residences out there living on that current road right now, right now. So I'll split that cost with y'all because that's your street.
Okay, so you're looking at the water, which is the eighteen-nine?
Yes, ma'am.
And half of the six thousand, seven fifty.
Right, and then y'all allow me to put in a septic system. And I'll pay my thousand dollar tap fee for the sewer line and whenever it gets out there, y'all don't even have to, I won't even, I won't even charge all the interest on a thousand dollars. I'll give y'all the grand and say, here, I'm not worried about it. I'm not worried about the little interest rate. I just wanna be able to put in a septic system, I'll help y'all with the water line and with the road and we'll call it even. That's almost a direct split down the middle of the fifty-one grand.
Now, if we do ever receive sewer out there, I'd like to have an agreement that said you automatically have to...
Abandon the septic system and tie in, right. And that's what me and my fiance discussed because we were like, what? Because I was told by somebody, oh, it's, you know, sewage is affecting the groundwater and this and that. Well, no, no, not really because...
We'll be in an aerobic system, right?
Well, I guess whatever y'all's ordinances require. Yeah, whatever, whatever's required by y'all from here on out. I mean, this was a big issue from the beginning, but I've never planned on doing anything outside y'all's scope of work as far as planning my buildings or anything like that, so... So I know how costly it can be if somebody comes back and says, oh, by the way, that's not right, you gotta redo it.
But we also know that if we do have a fire out there, you're also certainly gonna be liable to where the fire truck couldn't get out there and did not have adequate amount of water to put out the fire and something, something really happened inside the house.
Well, he's agreeing to pay for the water line. He's not gonna pay for it.
Right, that would cover the, that would eliminate that problem. The only other problem we'd be working on is the septic system. And I mean, I got five acres, I'm only putting one garage and one house on it. I mean, about to get married next year, start a family, I'm not looking to develop anything or build houses and whatnot.
Mr. Spears, just to verify, you just said you would pay for the water line and half the street, correct?
Yes.
The council should consider a stipulation on that development agreement that if that property is ever replatted, all of those fees apply.
I don't plan on replating, so if I sell it and then the guy comes or whomever buys it from me, wants to do this and he has to come back here anyway to replat, rezone, whatever, whatever he needs to do. He needs permission from the city council in order to do that, correct? Okay. So that doesn't even apply to me?
Do a separate create, does it have to, it should be the last thing?
Does he, if he sells it, do they have to come to us before they replat?
No, no, sell it if they replats any portion of that property then. The entire agreement should apply.
Right. And I planned on signing an agreement with y'all anyway stating that I wasn't planning on doing any other substructures or family coming out, moving with me or nothing like that. I'm out here to get away from them. So...
But if you do build that, you know what you're gonna pay, right?
Yeah, I heard, man, that two hundred and twenty-something thousand dollars. I don't have the money for that, no, no, sir, no.
So the other question is the twenty-something thousand, are we still gonna give him ten years to pay?
I would request that just simply because I wouldn't be able to come out of pocket right now. I slapped down twenty-five thousand dollars. Or maybe we can probably even do it at a shorter term, but I would have to talk to my better half and we'd have to discuss things like that and we'd get back with that as far as if we had to come back to another council meeting or deal with Ms. Carrillo or whomever.
So we're looking at the, coming up to about twenty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars?
Is that what it is?
Half of the six thousand, seven fifty and eighteen thousand, nine fifty. If my math is correct, it's about twenty-two, three twenty-two.
Twenty-two, three twenty-two, yeah. I don't have any of this paperwork, so I didn't crunch any of the numbers yet.
Take a motion for city manager, Mr. Spears, to get together to settle on the phone number.
So is the, is the number, the water, the fifty percent of the streets at the stated interest rate over ten years?
Yes, he put in a septic system and then whenever...
Whenever we get sewer out there, yes.
There's a lot of details, y'all need to work out a lot of details.
With the majority of the...
If you could do it a lesser period of time, I'd figure that he's agreeable to, I think that's the question.
Yeah, I'm kind of opposed to interest rates. I don't like interest rates. But maybe we can, I don't know what the city has or what y'all do with that, how that works out, but I guess I'll find out pretty quick. And maybe, is the interest rate negotiable, first of all?
It's the interest rate the city's paying plus half of the...
That's just the going rate.
Okay.
I mean, it could go up, it could go down.
It's a better rate if you get some places.
We'll just have to see then.
And also, we'll find out time period within twenty, thirty days within our... We'll get it set and done quickly so we can build a house.
Yeah, we got plenty of time before that even begins, so just wanna get all this hashed.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll have it all hashed out before next council meeting and then we'll go ahead and I'll take my paperwork and go consult and then get back with y'all and sign and be square. That way, when I go to do this, I don't run into any more problems because it's probably gonna be a year, a year and a half. But I found out all this right after I closed on it, that's why I jumped on it real quick. Surprise! All right, that's all I have, so I appreciate it, y'all.
So item A would be...
Table to next council.
That's me getting motion table. I make a motion to be table, item A, until the council meeting, we'll get details with Mr. Spears.
Second motion.
All person, aye?
Aye.
Bring us to item B, proposed development agreement for Robert Delarosa. The property is subscribed as lot two A, block two oh two Burton, Danforth, fifteen oh three West McCombs. At Aransas Pass, Texas, property zone for R sixteen, single-family dwelling district.
Same, same issue, the property owners are, they're actually in a more developed area. They have street and water. The Delarossas are bearing the cost of their own water extension. They've asked for assistance with their wastewater. They wanna put in a septic. They understand they have to pay their tap today and they are gonna pay it over a twelve-month period. They're entering into their agreement, our stated interest rate, rate right now is three percent. So add the half a percent, that brings their monthly payment to sixty-seven ninety-four over twelve months. The Delarossas met their, in agreement, they're in the audience.
Y'all, you have a group there, do you want to say?
We need a copy of the agreement. We didn't get one at that time.
They'll get the copy when you sign it. They have signed their portion, they're just waiting for your signature.
So I hear a motion for approval by...
I make a motion that we approve item B?
They have to tie in within, within eighteen months. They have to tie in within eighteen months. They understand they're in recent construction. So they know they have to talk to their plumber and ready their things.
Is that, is that all in the agreement?
Yes, it's in the agreement.
And are we looking to run the sewer out there within a reasonable amount of time?
Within seven years.
Okay.
How long is it then?
McClung's a nice road. I mean, you know, other than...
Do we have...
Yeah.
I'm sorry, there was a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion that we approve item B.
Second.
All person, aye?
Aye.
Mayor, I think you can do items C and E together.
C and E?
Yeah.
Public hearing. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mayor. I declare a public hearing open for the purchase of taking up item C, which is a proposed change to remove manufactured home use as a primary use for all zoning districts with the exception being manufactured home districts. And item E, public hearing on proposed changes to the general business zoning use charts. Sylvie, you wanna address this?
Yes, item C right now is the obvious. Our current single-family zones allow a mobile home, so you'll see a stick-built brick home and then you'll see a mobile home. So it's removing that mobile home use and putting it only in the mobile home district with the exception of if you're going to live on the lot while you build, then they would have to come for a conditional use permit and only live there for whatever that stipulated period of time is. And then in the general business zoning charts, we removed a lot of the items that were industrial in nature, railroad stations, heli stops, those kinds of things. And keeping in mind that Wheeler and commercial and some of our more important corridors are zoned general business, not heavy commercial, general business because it keeps screening and those kinds of things in place. Planning Commission mulled us over multiple months before we finally agreed on what the charts are. And I think it's fair, we left the residential component in because there are so many residentials encouraging mixed use, those residential and commercial uses. And keeping those retail uses that not only benefit the neighborhood, those streets back up into, but don't allow for the big oversized storage and the outdoor storage and those things that keep our corridors messy looking. We want a neat, nice appearance as you're driving into Aransas Pass in any one of those corridors.
Members of the council, have any questions or comments?
When you say that we have the manufactured home area, can you show where is that actually located that we have?
We actually have a zoning district called MH. I'm sorry?
Is that across from Chris's room?
That's the challenge, right?
Smart opinion. Best the county can give us.
It's under administration forms.
It is, right? Thank you.
I've had the same search.
This is our current zoning map, so MH right there.
I'm sorry, where is?
Right here.
I'm sorry, I don't see where right here is. I'm sorry.
Beasley. I'm circling the mountain.
MH? Oh, right, and over there at the...
Right here.
So it's all the, the light pink, is that correct?
Uh-huh, this, this very, very light pink. There's MH right there, there's MH right there. Here, here, here. And so the way the current zoning chart read, you can put it in any residential district, which is not a protection of an asset for those people who are doing stick-built houses. Mobile homes don't tend to keep their value.
Any other questions or comments?
So by, is there...
I have a question.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do we have any kind of guidelines as far as the age of the mobile home and the condition?
In the building code, they can't be older than ten years and they warrant an inspection for Michael and they have to be able to be moved safely onto the premises and get a tie-down permit in their windstorm.
Don't they have to be certified with windstorm certificate or that plate?
Their engineer who's signing off on their stuff certifies there. How does that affect how?
Is there anyone in the, in the audience who is opposed to either of these proposed changes? Any other questions or comments by the council? If not, then I declare the public hearing closed.
So let's bring us to item D, considering that, proposed change to remove manufactured home use as a primary use of all zoning districts with the exception of being an MH manufactured home housing district. Then also for F, consider proposed changes to the general business zoning use.
I'm sorry, what you don't see on here is Planning Commission approved a Harbor District at the last meeting, so you'll see it on your next council, see it on your next council.
So bring us to item number nineteen, considering that, accept the bid for this water treatment plant roof.
This is part of the improvements that the wastewater treatment plant needed. We transferred a hundred thousand from the prior sale for water wastewater improvements. The roof is just one of them. The bids came in. The bid that we chose was not necessarily the lowest bid, but they did offer a ten-year warranty. So that's thirty-nine, seven thirty-nine from Berryman Roofing.
And this is for the laboratory in that other building, is that correct?
Mm-hmm. They're calling it the large building and then they're calling it the little building on the... I'm sorry, large building, small building.
I make a motion that we accept the bid from Berryman for thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine, twenty-three.
Second.
All person, aye?
Aye.
All right, Ms. Carrillo, throw up.
I just wanted to let the council know, we did go through the Public Investment Funds Act. Donna, do you need to say anything about that?
I just have the report. You're gonna be getting it quarterly, this is as of March thirty-first. It's literally just a list of all the bank accounts that we have, all of our investment accounts. It'll be getting shorter, we're closing accounts, we'll be happy to know. It also shows we're getting some pretty abysmal interest rates. And so in the next council meeting, we're gonna come to you with a list of investment advisors and brokers that we wanna have approved as part of our public funds investment act so that we can start moving some of this money to some better places with some better rates.
So how many actual bank accounts have we closed?
We closed a dozen probably in the last two weeks and we will be consolidating more and more. As Brenda has worked on the audit, she and I have talked about that and getting rid of a lot of the odd little funds that we have hanging out. And so we're gonna get rid of a bunch of those.
There was about nineteen accounts that we easily identified. Easily identified that there was no really rhyme or reason for it and there's probably more as the year progresses. And this, this public funds, Donna went to the training. It is really just that, so folks can understand what, you know, I call it, I call it a shell game. It's coconut, where are we moving the money and where, you know, and it shouldn't be like that. It should be very transparent. You should know where the bank accounts lie, what the interest is earned and where that money's actually going, so... We have to, we have to go to this training every two years?
Every year, so.
My update was really an open record request form. I get requests from citizens, I get requests from council members, I get requests, you know, ten ways to Sunday on little tidbits of information. So staff and I created an open records request form, so we're gonna be filling that out. So if we get a request for, I don't know, the last lease, the last request I got this morning was they wanted a copy of Mr. Pena's lease, okay. And it usually comes in an email and it's usually a member of the community or whoever. And we typically just provide that information. So what we're going to do to track all of those things is we're gonna fill out that open records request form, attach it, and at some point, my plan is, we have all of those on the internet. So if there's recurrent requests, then we just point people to the website and say, this was the last request. We don't have to redact a whole lot of information other than people's social and driver's license and those kinds of things, but it's important to know if we keep having a similar request, what is that request and so usually where there's smoke, there's fires, what I'm trying to say. Just trying to keep a handle too on information. My plan is to throw it up all on the internet. Our website has to be revamped a little bit, but we're getting it.
Any other questions?
All right, let's bring us to number twenty-one, our citizen comments. Yeah, my favorite. Does anybody would like to state their name, the business, three minutes, time, the manner? Any agrees? Anybody happy? No? JP, come on up.
Hello, council. My name's John Gonzalez. I live and work here and from my point of view, I am very happy to see how our city is starting to expand and to grow and everybody working together. It's heartwarming and also makes me feel good to be a part of this community and with the crew that I work with. Thank you very much.
You too.
We're gonna come up with shirts, we decided, I was meeting with some downtown people, we're gonna come up with shirts and say, I wanna change the world, I'll start with the Aransas Pass. That's, that's the vibe I'm getting from our... Yes, and we're gonna let them build houses in Aransas. That's, that's the vibe I'm getting from staff. They're, you know, they're very, very excited to be on board and especially understanding the why. You know, JP, I know in the beginning, you know, Sandy's departure left him... You know, JP, I know, in the beginning, you know, Sandy's departure left him kind of questioning some things and understanding the why and now understanding the role that he plays in this whole thing, which perhaps had been minimalized before. You kind of get it now, huh? It's important to do this. Nobody's job is minimal.
No, everybody's important. Is there anybody else who'd like to make a comment?
My name's Carol Salinas and I'll just, don't want you to go home too early. While we're talking about the interest into Aransas Pass, I miss the fountain that hasn't been flowing for quite some time. I've heard lots of just local rumors about why it runs for a while and then it stops. And I don't know why, but I really miss that. So if there's anything we could do, I'd like to see that started back.
They're working on the balance, they're fixing the balance, they're fixing parts. Apparently Bill tells me people throw soap in there.
They do, they do.
Is there nothing I did anything like that?
Are you sure?
They're right down the street from our house, so be quick.
So is there anybody else who'd like to make a citizen comment? If not, before closing citizen comments, I would like to give a special happy birthday to Ms. Patsy Lawrence. Appreciate what you do behind the scenes, bring your husband in for our meetings and stuff. It's always a great deal of appreciation to the service y'all done to the community as a couple. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, now with that done, I would like to say, you know, it's a privilege. And then also please tell the chairman of this meeting to listen in.
Make a motion, will you, Jerk?
Second motion. All person, aye? They know you're willing to give them. Really?
There's one on the left, that's inside. The printer goes into, and I've got it plugged into this.
Give me a yell if you have any questions. Tomorrow afternoon I may have a class, but in the morning I think I'll do. My problem is I've got about three ordinances that I've got to get done. Yeah, just give me a yell. Okay, I don't really have a lot. Okay, thanks, Jim.
Okay, look like you were coming towards me and then you turned around real quick.
Talk to your brother about swimming.
Oh, yeah.
It's marrying everybody when they're coming from different places with different cultures. Yeah, and like I said, I'll see if there's any other meetings we need for communication with them. Okay, great, well, this nice thing for good.
I wrote it from the internet, the stuff that I found online about it.
You would have never guessed. No, no, but I mean, so. Because I know, in fact, we've invented telling us they're sending us something down, we're saying someone sold his graduate from land and it's all. As part of seeing, this former president of, you know, graduate. So guys have great networking. I want to watch that, just so I can like sign people and be like, because I used to be able to do this to a wagon. I can understand Spanish. You know, it's really bad, my husband doesn't speak it, but he understands it, sir. And when we're at town, and I didn't, we need to stop, I didn't get this feeling. So my question is, does somebody have to go through whatever, again? I mean, of course, the guy says, he's like, you know, the pay, you know, he gave him the pay or how much he would ask for me to do whatever he goes, but he said that he think he has to wait before somebody goes in a room. So is it going to take three weeks for somebody to go in a room, whatever work is going to be done? I'm just, that's a question, but I didn't think it would take that long.
As long as they have the plans to do it. There's this license.
Is this okay?
Okay, now it's not. You know, I'm just afraid if they're going to move a trailer or something.
There's a couple people, three there, that have.
I just wonder because they're like, I just kind of want to be there and put something in there.
I'm just wondering if they're gonna leave, I mean, I'm just kinda wondering if they're gonna put something in there.
And, uh, Jim Mills put it all up, you know, that they're, oh, right.
Yeah, and so I can live here, I've been a student. The cost of, the cost of, uh. They're never gonna lose a lot of cost of property from here, they're giving like, I don't know. It's so, I, I, I. It's gonna be longer. I know, but it was supposed to happen.